Good evening and thank you for joining us today. On behalf of the Raleigh Chamber of Commerce, I would like to welcome the candidates, the members of the community that are joining us today to be here at this forum. For members of the public, I would like to let you know that there is question forms that you can fill out and submit. We will go through a series of questions in rotating order. The order has already been randomly selected by the candidates before the start of this transmission. You may submit your questions, raise your hand, and somebody will come up and get it. And we will take some of those questions at random and incorporate them into tonight's order. So tonight, our candidates are in order, random order. Mr. Miguel Miranda, Ms. Helen Noriega, and Mr. Sam Couchman. The first question is an introduction by the candidate. You have up to three minutes to introduce yourself. We will start with Mr. Miranda. The candidates have also been explained the order of the warning system on the lights that lets you know how you're coming up against your time limits. Mr. Miranda, you may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Miguel Miranda. Born and raised here in Raleigh. Fifty-six years ago, I attended elementary school, Dallas School-Boward, and I'm a graduate class of 1976, and San Diego, Fairleigh College, Class 78. For 36 years, I've been involved in my community and various clubs and organizations, helping out and just basically being involved in our community. For years ago, I came to you folks and seek for your support and get voted. There was three actual issues that I was concerned. One was to balance the reserve, the budget, bring a fire station that was dearly needed here on the east of the tracks, and also bring more businesses because that's what basically we'll need as a tax base. And today, I am humbled to let you know that those three accomplishes, as we at the council we have fulfilled. It's the first time in a long, long time, fiscal year 2013-14, we tapped in zero percent of the reserve funds. And that's a big plus, thanks to our city manager and staff. Also, if you cruise today on Jones and Eastern, you will find the best state-of-the-art fire station that through the efforts of, again, us, the city council, we were very dedicated to be here. I am married for 32 years, I have three children, and I will continue to help my community, our city of Raleigh, get elected again for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Miranda. Three minutes now go to Ms. Helen Noriega.
Good evening. My name is Helen Noriega. Ladies and gentlemen, Chamber of Commerce, I am here to express why I have the desire to be on the city council. I was born and raised in Raleigh. My husband and I have four children. We always reminded each other to shop and gas up in our own town, to leave all our tax money and as much as possible to our city. I feel the need to make this city one of the best, where people want to visit, start a business, and a family. I want to represent the city of Raleigh as your next city councilwoman because I will give the board a different perspective. As I bring with me over 12 years of experience, I was elected by the people for three consecutive terms. I'm a person who has a lot to give and voice my opinions as a representative of all stakeholders. I am given a task, and I promise you I will give you 100% working effort. I study the information I'm given and give you what is best for the majority. In the 12 years of being elected, I have learned the protocols and ways of a board member. For example, I know it takes a majority to do changes. I know it takes more than a day to make decisions. I know working with budgets is not an easy task. I understand the importance of job security. I want to send a clear signal about my commitment that I too will study and be accountable to the staff and to the community. I have served on 19 organizations. I believe it's important to be involved in our community organizations because it allows me to learn the different aspects of various groups. We all need to participate and work together towards helping others and to contributing to well-being of our city. I also have the advantage of being able to communicate both in English and Spanish. I am the best candidate for Raleigh City Council because I have the experience of representing the people of Raleigh who elected me for three consecutive terms. They believe in me and my work ethics and my honesty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noriega. Mr. Sam Couchman, you have three minutes for your introduction statement.
Okay. Good afternoon, Sam Couchman. Currently serving as mayor here in the city of Raleigh. My wife, Wanda, she's in the audience. I have two sons and two stepsons. One is currently serving the United States Army in Texas. The other one resides here in Raleigh, and then the two stepsons reside in San Diego. I'm a Raleigh Union High School graduate, an IBC graduate, and a San Diego State University graduate. I've been a resident of Raleigh for over 60 years. I'm currently serving my fourth year on the Raleigh City Council. I was 23 years as a department head with the county. I had budgets of up to $30 million. I had 80-plus employees there, and I had multiple contracts worth millions of dollars. I have a lot of experience in the area of government. I have some experience in the area of private sector also because I have owned my own business in the past. I have interaction with state and federal government officials at all levels, and I feel that's a good experience for me to have here as a city councilman. I'm active in the community, probably in every organization or almost every organization here in the community, including the Elks, the Dogwood Society, the Stockman's Club. I'm the treasurer of the Ivy Coin Club. I'm a life member of the Historical Society, a life member of the Valley Rifle and Pistol Association. I'm a Chamber of Commerce member. I've been very, very active in numerous other community and civic organizations. I also was a past board member of the Secar School Board. So I do have some experience in dealing with boards, government, all of those types of areas. I feel it's a commitment of mine to serve the city of Raleigh. I appreciate serving in the last four years. I'd like to continue that service for the next four years. I think Raleigh needs strong leadership. I think we're an important community. We're a very good-looking community, I think, out there. In fact, in the valley, I consider Raleigh to be the greatest city, and I would want to continue that effort. I think we've got some real things with economic development here, where businesses have come in. We have our park system, which is probably the best in the valley, and we have numerous other things that we do here in Raleigh that I think we do a very good job on. We certainly need improvement in areas, and I'd like to continue that effort, especially in the area of economic development with the city's core, the bypass, and the Walmart corridor. So I appreciate the support that I've had, and I want to continue to serve the city of Raleigh in the fashion that I have over the last four years. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Couchman. We will now start with the first of three questions. Candidates have been provided with the information on these questions before, so they've had an opportunity to prepare. In changing the order in which we start the questions, the first to answer this question will be Mrs. Helen Noriega. And the question reads, "What would you do to change the landscape of Raleigh?"
I think one of the things that I discussed with Parks and Recreation at one time was changing the landscape on the divider in the middle of Main Street to maybe having, in order to conserve money, was to put different colors of rocks and cactus plants that didn't take up any water or any kind of labor. He had mentioned at one time that his maintenance crew has been cut. He had three part-timers and two full-timers since Karen had left us. So that was one of the discussions that I had with him. Also, I believe that just cleaning up the main street where our burnt area is has to be a big landscape change there. That has to be cleaned up. The first thing that when people come into town, that's the first thing they see. So in order to welcome them and for them to want to stay and open up business, that is something that I really truly feel that we need to do. We are working now with the southwest of our town, and that is looking very nice. But truthfully, we now need to look at Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noriega. The same question goes to Mr. Couchman. Once again, you have two minutes for your response. What would you do to change the landscape of Raleigh?
Okay. I think as far as council goes, I would continue to address the issue downtown in the core area, which is clean up the fire locations, change the regulations for downtown, which we've already started, and we're going to look at some more of those, I believe, in the future. Parking reviews, we need to look at how we park in the downtown area and how traffic flows through that area. We need an event emphasis, which we're attempting to do right now. Focus some events in the downtown area and some focus on the downtown area, showcase that area. Once it gets to be looking good, and I think it is now, we'll get it even looking better. Graffiti abatement, that's always a big issue in the downtown area, and I think we have to address that on an ongoing basis. I think we need to continue to encourage the development of the Walmart corridor, very, very important corridor for us. And until that area is complete, we need to put some emphasis on that along with the downtown area. I think development of a west-east access is important, so to Dogwood and to 111, to access that area, I think that's very important for us for the future. I'd like to annex the bypass areas, or at least start doing that, and plan development, first commercial and then other resources in that area. We certainly have to continue our recreational programs here in Raleigh, and we have to develop ways to deal with our parks with limited resources, so I think we have to look at those as an emphasis. But I think in reality, economic development, if it occurs, you'll see some money for those other things to come into town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Couchman. Mr. Miranda, the same question comes to you. You have two minutes to answer this question. What would you do to change the landscape of Raleigh?
Well, to truth, change the landscape of Raleigh, there must be change in on how we look at issues facing us. We have to look collectively at the issues of challenges and opportunity, not just negative impacting us. I will continue working to tell the residents of Raleigh that any issue that arises in Raleigh is an issue that we need to work on together to improve our community. As an example, the fires downtown were senseless and destructive, and we can feel sorry for those businesses owners. But we also have to say that downtown is ours, that we must really rally and make it better only by believing that we can make a difference in Raleigh while it happens. The bypass is another example of issues facing Raleigh. We can look at lost revenues from traffic going around Raleigh and focus on how to develop around the bypass and capture those revenues and understand that the opportunity being presented is our challenge and not the lost traffic that has already been known would come. We can work on how to use our Main Street, not that there is less traffic, and we can have more activities that will bring people downtown to see what is available. A great example is facing challenges where the earthquake that hit our city. Residents were impacted by the city. Did all good to help people get back on their feet and some back to their homes as quickly as possible. We communicated with staff and residents and put an action plan to work as fast, as soon as possible, and people responded by helping each other find the resources available to survive and move forward. That spirit of helping and taking responsibility to our town and residents is what I will work at to change the landscape of Raleigh if really, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. The next question that we go to is question number two in a series of three preset questions. The order will change. This time, the first person to respond to this question is Mr. Couchman. Mr. Couchman, you have two minutes to answer this question. What is your biggest concern regarding economic development in Raleigh?
My biggest concern regarding economic development in Raleigh is the encouragement of smart growth in the Raleigh area. Raleigh is very, very unique in the sense that it really has three business areas right now: the Main Street area, the bypass, and the Walmart corridor. So it takes a lot of effort, I think, on our part to ensure smart growth in all three of those areas and attempt to grow economically in all three of those areas. But along with that, we must address the retention of existing businesses within those corridors and within those economic development areas. Because if we just focus on new business, we'll continue to lose some of the older businesses that we have. So I think it's important that we focus on that. Our three areas of development, bypass, downtown core, Walmart corridor, very, very important, and they're probably each our biggest concern here in terms of attracting businesses and retaining businesses here in Raleigh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Couchman. Before we go to the next candidate, Mr. Miranda, I'd like to remind the members of the public that there are these forms available, that you can fill your questions. After this run of questions, we're going to go around collecting. That's kind of the cutoff, in case you have any questions, so the candidates, they can select one at random. Questions, same question goes to candidate Miranda. You have two minutes to answer this question. What is your biggest concern regarding economic development in Raleigh?
My biggest concern is how to develop, promote, and make people understand the great opportunity for business development Raleigh has to offer. With a solid population base and established businesses, Raleigh can offer opportunities to new businesses that can work with the opportunities being presented, such as the development of business around the Raleigh bypass that would help us capture lost tax revenues because of the bypass diverting traffic around Raleigh, as well as an opportunity in the undercore of the city. By looking to promote all areas of the city for business development, we can enhance the already growing business tax base and the continued development of the Walmart area that will increase the city tax base. To that objective, a large concern is how businesses view our area. That Raleigh itself does not fit the physical typical business profile for establishing newer and larger businesses. I have been to business expos and talked with potential business developers and representatives of Raleigh. They do not understand the dynamics of our community that includes shoppers from other towns like Westmore and Caliban Island and the Salt and Sea area. Yes, allow those migrant workers that come during the harvest season to spend the dollars in Raleigh. We must develop the strong message to developers that there is money in Raleigh, and they will spend it in quality business looking to deliver quality products and services. Raleigh does fit the business profile if given the opportunity to prove itself, and I feel the new businesses that have come into Raleigh recently has proved positive, Raleigh being able to support quality business. So the concern I have regarding economic development is delivering the message so that's an opportunity broadly for potential business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Once again, for those of us that have joined us here in the last minute or so in council chambers, there are some forms, questions, we will be going around picking up after this last question. It is your opportunity to submit a question that may be selected for the candidate. With that in mind, Ms. Noriega, you have two minutes for the same question. What is your biggest concern regarding economic development in Raleigh?
Thank you. One of the things is the lack of knowledgeable staff who are in charge of bringing in businesses. I really feel that we need to provide staff who are in charge of that with training. Also, we need to be more business-friendly. I've had concerns about people coming in and asking different questions in two different departments and not really getting the runaround but not getting the answers for the questions that they're asking. Also, the bringing of some of our downtown buildings are creating a bleak outlook for the future of our city and downtown merchants. So with that, I believe that we need to really look into what we're going to do about these burnt buildings, you know? Who can we bring out to want to maybe make a mini mall inside the furniture store there? I believe that if we had small little businesses, things would be starting to look up in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noriega. At this time, chamber representatives will go ahead and pick up any questions that may be coming in from the audience and ready them to ask to the candidates. The third question, in keeping with Ron Robin, will first go to Mr. Miranda. Mr. Miranda, you have two minutes for this question. How would your election to the city council impact economic development in Raleigh?
My reelection to the Raleigh City Council would impact economic development in Raleigh by continuing the steady forward progress the city is currently experiencing with new businesses that had opened in the time of office. New businesses have opened around the Walmart area, and there are painting projects in that same area that we, as council, are working hard to make sure they are open. We have also seen businesses open in other areas of Raleigh, like the Dollar Store on the east side of Raleigh, as well as some small businesses. My reelection would also impact economic development in Raleigh by promoting the city to work with already established businesses, to St. and Raleigh and others, to expand their existing businesses. I will continue to work every day on looking to bring economic development to the city of Raleigh to increase our tax base. I have personally talked to business owners in other areas and with, along other city council members about Raleigh and why they should come to Raleigh. As an example, the Chandy Group that developed AM PM, Del Taco, and Perfect Color Wash. When we met, we talked about having them coming over to us. And former Ryan Kelly and myself, we attended the expo in Vegas, and we were very happy to, actually, that project was going to go to Calixto. And for whatever reason, you know, we were there at the right time, and they decided to be here in Raleigh. Ever since then, I personally have met and spoken with business owner, Mr. Chandy, a few times to encourage him on this project and this other project. I'm not free at this time to bring up, but we're working closely together that in the future, you'll find out more about that. I also talked to our staff and gave ideas of all the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Question goes to Ms. Noriega, the same question, you have two minutes. How would your election to the city council impact economic development in Raleigh?
I would change, I would start changing by talking to the individuals that have ideas. I've already spoken to a few of the people here in the city, and a lot of them have great ideas, but for whatever reason, people are not listening. So that would be one of my deals. And then change the look of the downtown area because even if it means just painting some of the walls, putting murals on them, placing some planters outside along those walls to at least make it look presentable. Also, again, providing staff with training. I do believe that they would really be, they need to be afforded the training. We put people in certain positions without any kind of training, and some of them would like some training. Also, start a team working together because in a pathway to a beautiful city, you're going to have people wanting to come in and to venture in some kind of a business. We already have, I understand, one of the buildings down Main Street being purchased, and they're looking into putting some kind of senior people in there. But one of the things is, I would like to see a new seniors center. Our senior citizens here are quite, quite an abundance of seniors we have, excuse me, we have an abundant seniors here, and they look into having some kind of seniors center. We need to work with the community and the city council and our staff to looking into some grants for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noriega. Once again, the same question goes to the third candidate, in this case, Mr. Couchman. Mr. Couchman, you have two minutes. The question reads, "How would your election to the city council impact economic development in Raleigh?"
Well, I feel like in my four years of serving right now, I think we've enhanced the economic development of Raleigh. We've got a lot of new businesses actually that have located here in Raleigh, and we've also expanded some businesses here. My continued service would enhance that, which is already happening in some of the areas of Raleigh. I know that we look to encourage grant applications to help the downtown area, and I think that's important, and we've certainly been behind that. I also feel that we have worked with the projects, and I've worked with the projects, the housing projects that have failed here that are starting to have return interest, and I think that with that, as you get more residents, then you will have more economic development. So I think they go hand-in-hand with the business attraction and retention. I am accessible to all business owners, mostly at almost all times. I am committed, I am accountable, and I'm willing to be directly involved with anyone attempting to develop a business in Raleigh, and I have been. I've talked with the different business owners that have located here. I've been out there to meet with them. I always encourage development when I go into other areas, talking with other business people in outside areas to locate in Raleigh, and I do have some ideas for that. I'm also a strong supporter of the Chamber of Commerce. I've been a member for quite some time now, and I believe that the chamber serves as a marketing tool for the city, as IBC does also. And I've been a strong supporter of both those organizations, and I believe that they do bring a value to the city in terms of business attraction. So economic development, extremely important, and I believe that I have shown that in my service, and I will continue to serve that if applicable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Couchman. The next question, it's the first question that comes to us from those present here today. The question in the order that we've been taking goes to candidate, which was Ms. Noriega. One of the things that we do with some of these questions is when they get written, sometimes there is three or four questions that are written on the same, on the same ground. So what we'll do is I'll start with the beginning. It'll be the same question for all three of you, two minutes. The question is, "Please comment on the proposed communications tower in Yonkers Park." You have two minutes. Thank you.
We're talking about the AT&amp;T Tower. I was for the AT&amp;T Tower, and the reason why, in talking to some community members that have been involved with the city council previously, I was asking them about what conflicts, what's are the do's and the don'ts about that? And one of the biggest things they said was, one, they would take care of taking down our water tower. It would cost approximately $150,000 to bring down. That's approximate. And the technology that we have these days, that tower probably would not last the rest of our lifetime here. It would be taken down, other technologies would be used afterwards. And also, that tower was not going to give out any kind of radiation, electrical, what people were saying that it was going to harm us. That is not true, and that's from people that work all day long with electricity. They have speculated that that would be in the way of the use of people who use our park, and that is not true. That park is very large. It can be used and has been used by many of us here. So that for me, the tower would be something good for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noriega. So the question goes to Mr. Couchman. Mr. Couchman, you have two minutes to respond or address this question. Please comment on the proposed communications tower in Yonkers Park.
I believe that the communication tower might have been a good idea. The problem was, the council did not really have an opportunity to discuss this in detail with AT&amp;T regarding any kind of agreements, any kind of reimbursement or any of that thing. Certainly, AT&amp;T was going to take down the tower. Revenue would have been created. I believe that the council would have had a chance to negotiate an MOU with AT&amp;T. There would have been some real benefit to that section of town and to that park area. It's unfortunate that we did not get an opportunity to do that, and I believe that there were certain segments of the community that were opposed to that. And I believe that we could have answered some of their questions, resolved some of the issues, and I believe if we would have had the opportunity to enter into that type of discussion with AT&amp;T, I believe that we could have resolved many of those differences. And I believe that ultimately, we're going to be faced with those kinds of decisions again, and we need to make the best decision for everyone in Raleigh. And we also need to increase revenue, and I think that's very, very important. And we also need to increase revenue, and I think that's very, very important. And so, my whole thing behind that was, it's kind of sad that we did not get an opportunity to address that issue further.
Thank you, Mr. Couchman. Ms. Miranda, the same question, you have two minutes to address this question. Please comment on the proposed communications tower, Eddie Nocosa.
Okay, I, I guess I was one of the, the only members in committee that was against it. For those of you that have been a resident of this beautiful city of Raleigh for 35 years or more, you might recall that there was constituents and individuals, as well as organizations and clubs, that wanted it one day, that, that tank be taken down and, and create some type of venue where people would come with their parents, their older folks, their kids, and play around and have some type of bleachers and auditorium style, like it, basically, out in the, in the public outside. And back then, if I'm not mistaken, the council that was there had the opportunity, because it was going to cost $50,000 to knock that down. And there was organizations that were in favor. Matter of fact, the city was going to cover about 10, 15,000. But for whatever reason, it didn't, it didn't fly. So, you know, today, when, when that came, I was against it on that particular side. And I believe there was question that, well, can you have it on the southwest of the park? But evidently, AT&amp;T wanted that spot where the tower was at. And I personally walked the streets, and I spoke to a lot of residents, and I owe that community a lot of respect. They elected me four years ago, and they came to me, and they told me, we don't want the tower here, Miguel, could you please help us? And that's what I did. I, we were serving in the community, and when I have issues like that, my people is first, and that was my community alone.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. For the next question, and the last question coming from our audience, we will start with Mr. Couchman. Mr. Couchman, you have two minutes to address this question. With the renovation plans underway for the Raleigh Playhouse Theater, what course of action would you support in regards to the arts for the city of Raleigh?
Well, I've been a strong supporter of the arts for the city of Raleigh. I think the Raleigh Theater's come a long way just in the last year or so, and I believe that effort will continue. I know they're, they're branching out into some other areas, and they're raising some revenue for that. And I certainly think that the city of Raleigh supports that wholly. And we've always been somewhat supportive of the arts, the Palmer Auditorium, the North Coalition for the Arts. And I think that's important, and I think arts are important to our community. We do encourage that activity, and the city, I think, will, will be behind any kind of activity that encourages that effort to bring culture and the arts to, to Raleigh. The theater is something that's been there for many, many, many years. When I was a child, I, I attended movies in that theater, and I, and I like to see it growing, and I like to, I would like to see it as a community venue for artistic talent and for both our students and our adults to present their talents and activities to the city of Raleigh. I think it's very important, and it could be a hub for the downtown area, and I think the improvement of that improves that downtown core. So anything that helps that, I'm certainly in favor of and would be supportive of. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Couchman. Same question goes to Mr. Miranda. Mr. Miranda, you have two minutes to address this question. The question reads, with the renovation plans underway for the Raleigh Playhouse Theater, what course of action would you support in regards to the arts for the city of Raleigh?
As the former Raleigh Arts Council back in the days of Alan Lopez, I am very supportive. And I know we want to be talking, we meaning the city council, as far as any sources of revenues, but the, the best thing is getting sponsorships here locally, with a lot of clubs, a lot of organizations that, that will come together, and that's one unique of our community. When there's issues or concerns or help, we all come as a team and come prepared to help out, and that's what the best avenue will be for Arts Council here. And yes, I am supportive.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. The last candidate to answer this question, Ms. Noriega, you have two minutes to address this question. The question reads, with the renovation plans underway for the Raleigh Playhouse Theater, what course of action would you support in regards to the arts for the city of Raleigh?
The theater is, the renovation, the theater and the renovation of the theater have been coming for quite some time. I'm very proud to say that I am going to be part of that. I wholeheartedly, 100% support them. They also, not only do they do the finance, but they also looking into other, other avenues of making other arts for our city, other buildings, they're looking into other buildings, not only those, but they also are helping us with the auditorium, which, as you know, when the earthquake, we had damage in the roofing. So they are also going to help us to renovate our auditorium, Palmer Auditorium again. So they have put in a lot of money, a lot of work, and a lot of time into our city. So yes, I am in, I'm in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Noriega. That concludes the questions from the public. For the last item in this particular round will be closing statements. Candidates will have up to five minutes to make their closing statements. In the, in the five minutes, you may address issues that you want to address, you may want to address rebuttals if you wish. Five minutes are yours to use as you see fit. The order will start with candidate Couchman. You have five minutes.
Okay. Well, my first statement is, I am 100% committed to serve Raleigh. And I think when we talk about Raleigh, we need to talk about how government operates here in Raleigh. And just listening to some of the questions that we have, I think it's important for people to realize that in government, we have to compromise. In government, we can't be polarized one way or the other. We have to be very open to all people's ideas, all kinds of things. And I think, you know, the AT&amp;T Tower is just one example of that, but economic development is an example of that, too. We have to be open to new ideas, and we have to make decisions up here that are sometimes compromised decisions, and sometimes ultimately, the decisions that we make will work out in the long run. They, they will, they will be the right decision. And I think as long as people understand that, we can't be like the federal government, just stop operating at different times. We need to be more open, I think, to ideas, compromise, getting the job done. I live here, I will always live here in Raleigh. People can rest assured that I have Raleigh's best interests in mind, because they are my interests, as they are all of yours. I have the education, I have the experience, I have the institutional knowledge, I have the historical perspective, having lived here for 60 years. I, I, I'm here to lead Raleigh for the next four years, and I will do the best job that I possibly can in order to do that. I think you've seen me in action, if you look at the videos that we do, and I think that's a very open way to display the meetings to people. If you've seen our meetings, they certainly vary from some of the other cities in the valley in terms of how we get things done, and how we succeed in getting actions taken and, and moving forward here in Raleigh on a very positive, I think, note. We had our, we've had our down, down things, like fires or earthquakes and everything else, but I think in terms of responding to that, I think we've done a good job in that. So in summary, Raleigh is my home, and it's your home. And we need to continue our efforts to, to ensure success for our city, for the future, for our children, and for everyone else that comes and goes in Raleigh. It's very, very important that we do the things that we need to do, and I'm willing to sit here and make those decisions on your behalf, and I'm willing to do what's right in Raleigh. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Couchman. In reversing the closing order from the way we had the opening statements, Ms. Noriega, you have five minutes for your closing statements.
When I ran for the high school, my motto was, I lead the blue and gold. Now my motto's going to be, I lead red, white, and blue. So with that saying, I would like to let you know that I have an open door policy. You can call me anytime, that's the kind of person I am. I will give you an honest opinion. Sometimes my opinion will not be what you want to hear, but that's the way I am. I will call you on it. If I hear that, you know, there was something you didn't like about it, I will call you back and say, okay, what is it that you don't like? What is it that you do like? I will go to the department heads, I will talk to the department heads, I will find out what is it that you need, what is it that you're lacking. And I do feel that lots of times, we do leave the staff behind and do not take care of what their needs are. And I do believe that if we take care of the staff, we're going to have a 100% beautiful city. They will be taken care of, they will take care of our city. I also like to say that we need to have stakeholder support, we need to have more looking into grants, we need a community involvement, we need to be working with our neighbor cities, finding out what have they done, what are some ideas, you know, trade with them, you know, what they do for their city, and it's looking up. I see Imperial, it's a small city, and yet, that city is growing, not only with people, but with businesses. So there's something that they're doing right. We also need to attract more venture capital. And how do we do that? We do that by working together, getting, getting everyone's ideas and having a pathway that we will have a long-term approach to bringing new businesses in. So with that said, I would like to ask your support and your vote on November the 5th. Alan Noriega, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noriega. Ms. Miranda, you have five minutes for your closing statements.
You know, in, in seven days, actually, a week, most of us will be out there in the polls, casting our vote, and pay very attention as to what has been done in the last, you know, eight, 10 years, especially the last four years. There's always people that say, well, what have you done? And I always tell them, you know, go to the source, go to the council chambers, you know, you can always speak to Mr. Rosanna Mayor, Mayor Moore, who is our city manager, and that's the easiest way, if you want to find out whether it's working or not. Don't go by gossiping that we have not done anything in the last four years. There's a lot that we have accomplished as a council. And I would encourage you, you know, the doors are wide open here, you can always come and find out what we have done. I ask you for your support, and again, I will strive very hard, like I have had done in the last four years, to make our community of Raleigh a better place to live. I encourage you to go out and vote, and vote for Miranda. Raleigh shows Miranda for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. On behalf of the Raleigh Chamber of Commerce, its membership, we would like to thank the candidates, the members of the audience, both here with us today in council chambers and those listening to us on the air, over the air, and would also like to thank KXO Radio for broadcasting this program. With that in mind, this will be rebroadcasted tomorrow morning on FM 107.5 at 9:00 a.m. This is also available tomorrow for podcast on kxoradio.com. I would like to also take this opportunity to remind everybody to, please don't forget to vote. Those of you that have those absentee ballots that you're holding on to, please get them in, and don't forget to go out and vote on Tuesday, November 5th.